I'm sorry, committed. She must have disputed its motions together. We're live.
Firework, sure. It's a delay.
It is a big delay, so I guess this one does kind of work. Just. Those shots, those shots still around, yes.
Well done.
That works.
A nice ringtone. Oh, that's too funny. All right, you guys ready?
All right, five o'clock, we will call the meeting to order.
I'd like the pageant to look back of the United States from there. And she's the public for which is stand one nation. With liberty and justice for all.
All righty, I'll start with our roll call, and we'll start with Rob. Dave.
Present.
Charles, present, Dave.
Present, and it's lonely on my side of the wall.
And Alquinn and Danny are absent. Do we have any changes to today's agenda before we entertain a motion to approve?
Motion approved. Support.
Motion by Dave, supported by Dave, that we approve today's agenda, all in favor?
All right.
Pose the same. Motion carried. In your packet, you have our minutes from our February fifth meeting. Looking for any corrections, updates, if not, then we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Move approval of minutes for February fifth, twenty twenty five.
Motion by Dave, supported by Rob, that we approve the meeting minutes from February fifth, twenty twenty five, all in favor? Was the same. Carried. At this time, we'll open it up for any public comment, I will just specify that we are going to have a special public comment period during our public hearing, so. Do you guys want to take a moment now or wait until we get to that, it's completely up to you? Okay. All right, so next up on our agenda, we have three separate, well, we have two resolutions and one ordinance for Pine River Township, they are independently zoned. For the last three years, they have not brought their changes or amendments to us, that was just an oversight on their part, so. We just basically have to give our recommendation. The first one we have is the resolution twenty twenty three dash nine, and this is a parcel that was currently zoned as ag and they rezoned it to heavy commercial. And this was done back in September of twenty three, September thirteenth of twenty three. So do you guys have any questions on that resolution, I think that's like five pages in here? Good. And then, let's see here. Do you guys want to do your recommendation, we can do two of the, one of two things, we can deny, we can approve, we can approve with stipulations. So I guess leave it up to you guys to see what you'd like to do.
Your march are done anyway, correct?
Correct.
I move legal was present.
Motion by Dave, supported by Rob, that we send our stamp of approval to Pine River Township, Pine River Township for their resolution dated nine thirteen of twenty three. Resolution number twenty three, or twenty twenty three dash nine, all in favor? Pose the same. Motion carried. All right, the next one we have that was done on November thirteenth of this year, I believe, yes, twenty twenty four, last year, sorry. And this is a parcel that they, it was zoned industrial and they rezoned it to ag. That resolution is also included here for your viewing.
To rubber stamp it.
Motion by Rob, supported by Dave, that we send our rubber stamp to Pine River Township for our resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four.
That limits the rubber sale.
The rubber stamp.
Which is.
Our seal of approval. All in favor?
All right.
Pose the same. Motion carried. All right, the next one we have from them is more recent. And this one is, I believe it was the fifteenth of February. Their board met and they did pass their battery energy storage system resolution, which is a little bit different than ours.
It's a dumb question, but should we look at this one after we decide ours?
I mean.
Just a question.
Or we have to, because they're self-zoned, so.
Yeah.
If we want to look at theirs, if it's better than ours, then I guess there's things we want to follow, I know we talked about setbacks last minute, but. It's just my two cents.
Leave it to you guys, whatever you want to do.
I'll make a motion to approve, or rubber stamp. Or seal of approval, whatever the technical term is for it, but I like the rubber stamp better, so we're festive.
That's funny.
All right, the motion by Dave, supported by Rob, that we send our sample of approval to Pine River for their battery, battery energy solar, B E S S, resolution. All right, all in favor? Pose the same. All right, motion carried. All right, at this time, we are going to open up our public hearing for our county battery energy storage system ordinance, and it is five oh six. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Explanation of the request is, we are looking to, I know we've talked about this a few times, we've had a few meetings, had our attorneys, Spicer, some representatives from consumers. Into discuss and pick apart, we picked this thing apart bazillion times. I do just want to remind you that we do not have to make a decision on this tonight, this is just holding a public hearing so that we can hear from the public and. Approve this tonight, if you guys are comfortable, or we can absolutely wait until our next meeting. Couple housekeeping items for the public comment, if you guys want to approach the podium, state your name and address. We are going to be limited to three minutes per our bylaws for your public comment. We will be taking notes, so any questions, concerns, anything that comes up during the public comment period, we're going to take notes and either Deander or myself will circle back with you with your questions and we'll go from there.
Ms. Chair, before we move on, just for my clarification, if, if this is approved tonight, we're, we're only, what we would do is approve to send this on to, to, we would approve to recommend that the county board approve this, correct?
Correct.
This is not a final document if we approve, thank you, I just want to make sure I understood, for my clarity.
Absolutely.
Do you motion open the chair or open the public hearing?
Um, I've, let's see here, I don't think that we do, I just opened it at five oh six. So we will welcome anybody to the podium.
Would it be possible for you to provide for those of us in the audience, an explanation of what the, of what it looks like? I know you still have a baby. Adjusting, but it'd be nice for us in the audience to be able to see what you guys have articulated so far.
Do we, do we have a video?
Yes, it's up here on the screen, which if you guys need to turn that screen so you can see it better, you can, please don't pull the TV off the wall. I almost did that, let me.
It'd be nice if we could come in, pick it up, and that it would eliminate perhaps some of the questions that we might have. As we're in red, maybe.
I hope it doesn't shut these people out, okay? Perfect, so here is what is currently drafted, the most recent draft. So the original drafts that were provided are all, at the time they were uploaded on the county website, it's been currently replaced with this most recent draft. Again, on the county website, or if you stop into a community development office here at the courthouse, you can also view it there as well, whichever one's easier for you. And yeah.
Can you anticipate sending your recommendations to the. Their next meeting, yes?
Um, yeah, so the process for an ordinance amendment adoption, at least for Grasset County, is that. Basically, two notices are sent out to the public, and we use Grasset County Herald for those notices. And then the planning commission will hold a public hearing. Typically, what the process is, is they will also review a draft in meetings prior, so November, December, January meetings, drafts were also reviewed. But they only hold one public hearing, which is what's happening today. And then the planning commission, along with the zoning administrator, will then send a recommendation based on public comment. As well as based on any history with other surroundings or ordinances such as Pine River. And then they'll send that recommendation to the board of commissioners, and then the board of commissioners will hold their own public hearing. To also hear public comment, because they'll have our notes, but I mean, more people may have something to say. So they'll hold their own public hearing, and then the board of commissioners will be the ones who officially either approve or deny in ordinance.
Don't want this to come to us.
It will absolutely not come to the zoning board of appeals, I promise. The only time it would ever come to the zoning board of appeals is if someone was requesting a variance regarding this. But because it's a special land use, it would be very difficult to obtain a variance in regards to it, so at the office, we wouldn't recommend that, because it would. Be a very slim chance of it being approved, because you have to meet those six requirements for variance to be approved.
I wouldn't want anybody to reply to us and say what they didn't have.
Right, yeah.
They're upset about that, so we can provide whatever we can do before they come at us.
Absolutely.
All right, we will welcome anybody to the podium. That would like to address the board.
Do, well, I think with the explanation, did you want her to walk through what our standards are in the ordinance, is that what you were asking? With the explanation, or did you want an explanation of the process?
No, not the process, just what, so, yes, would that be to. Arjus. Or me, or anyone else?
So you can, or you can ask your consultant to, which it does look like they have done.
Yes, Cindy, would you be able to walk through that for them, just give us a high level overview of what this is looking like?
What, what, that type of thing?
What brought us here, what actually, you know, why we are drafting this ordinance for the state legislation that just passed and all that good stuff, would you be able to provide that?
Hi, folks, yep, I'm here with Cindy, this is Mike Daly Martin from Spicer Group. Yeah, I, I, I will jump in on this, so I, I think the, the reason we started talking about battery storage really kind of started with the Michigan. State Legislature, they adopted a bill, PA two thirty three, which. Took certain uses and, and it created this set of standards where. Essentially, the, it, it gave an option for developers to get permitted through the state, through the Michigan Public Service Commission. So battery storage is one of those uses, along with wind and solar. So a lot of communities, I think, when, when PA two thirty three got adopted, they realized that, you know, we don't really have anything on the books for this use for battery storage. So we started working with Grasset County, I believe that was in the fall of last year, and, and been discussing. Different, you know, different revisions to this ordinance since that time, so. We've gone through the process of really looking into the specifics of, you know. What is utility scale versus what is personal, you know, how do we treat these uses depending on how large they are? What, you know, what would be appropriate for things like setbacks? We looked at, we have looked at some surrounding communities within the area to make sure that the county is in line with that. So that's, that's kind of a, you know, a very brief overview of the process, and, and please, you know, let, let us know if you'd like us to speak to anything, anything else on this right now.
Yes. One of the concerns that I'm hearing from the community is that we need this, we need some kind of. Declaration of what we, we as the county want, as opposed to the state coming in and banding something, so I'm. When I'm hearing, when I'm approached, that's one of the biggest concerns, is that we do have something in place of state demand land. And this whole process is to establish that.
But then bringing in solar panels and stuff like that, why wasn't the public asked if they were interested in having solar in their area? Like on a ballot?
Do you, so when, an ordinance wouldn't be on a ballot, so when an ordinance is adopted. It goes through the process that I just explained a little bit earlier, it, where you have two public hearings, and then you, planning commission will have a draft ordinance that they offer a recommendation on, and then the board of commissioners. Then approves or denies that, so when you adopt an ordinance. Um so when you adopt an ordinance, it's not something that is voted on. The opportunity for the public is during those three public hearings. Um and typically notices for public hearings, um at least for the six townships that the county zones, those will always be posted on the county website, here at the courthouse, and then also on the Grasset County Herald. Um and that's just per the Open Meetings Act requirements. As for like what the townships are, I don't know what their process is for adopting an ordinance, but we don't have a say over what they adopt.
So are you talking, uh what what townships are you talking?
Okay, so Grasset County zones, correct me if I'm wrong, I should know this. Um Grasset County zones, Elba, Hamilton, Lafayette, Newark, North Star, and Sumner. So. No.
Oh, uh if you're in another township, we'll say like Arcadia. You got nothing to say on this, or this is no record, our township supervisor?
So that goes directly to your township board, who would approve your ordinance? The only say that this board would have in regards to another township that is self-zoned is what we just did for Pine River, where we can offer a recommendation. Uh we can offer a recommendation in regards to what their regulations are, but we can't tell them yes or no in terms of if they can or cannot adopt an ordinance.
And I sure still know what I did in my front yard.
Yeah.
I lived on the country around my life, and I sure as heck don't want to look out my front yard and see all those that field in this half corner turned into solar panels.
Yeah.
Going in our front yard, side yard, and backyard, surrounded on three sides. So.
All right, do we wanna um, do you guys wanna approach, do you wanna come up Sheila? Yeah?
I think um some of this was already asked, but since I'm, I just want to go over over, this is only a short one, I promise. Um and I don't know if you've been instructed by your attorneys already to to accept the proposed ordinance today, um but given the significant risks associated with battery storage projects, it is important to consider all options.
Just for the record, could you?
My name is Sheila and yeah. Um I'm sorry, I'm just so used to, I've been here for the last year and a half, so I'm sorry. Um and my my family lives here in Grasset County, I grew up in Grasset County, went to school with Kathleen. Um and anyways, um there's a lot of things, we don't have anything to be rushed, we want to make sure that you dot every I and cross every T. Um it's important to get it right before sending it to the board. Um because if if something happens there, you don't want it back, you know. Um there are many things to take into consideration, and if we are not too late, and if I am allowed to, I would like to give you some additional new information to consider reviewing um before sending this on to the board. The information that I have will take a little bit of review, and most of the information is in electronic form that I would be happy to pass on for review. Um there's a lot of information that I would like to express today, but it's only a three minute time period for public comment. Um we all know that these lithium ion battery plants are dangerous if they catch fire, which happens often and puts the entire community in harm's way. Moss landing is only one example that we have all heard of that's been in the news, however, the U.S. is number two in lithium ion battery fires at battery storage facilities. Please do not finance finalize your ordinance until you have communicated with reputable fire safety team that has experience in dealing with lithium ion battery storage facilities. The inclusion of third-party engineering review ensures independent assessment of fire and explosion risks. Third-party review also prevents self-reported safety assessments from developers. We cannot afford to rely on self-reporting. We do recognize your options when adopting ordinances for these renewable energy projects, and that you have to balance the needs of the community with the rulings of the state. The state does not respect the value of local government, and the laws that they have passed impacts your ability to provide the protections that residents need. Nonetheless, we are asking for the best protections for our rural population, and we ask to be heard. And we appreciate you listening. Um I understand that Spicer Group is your consult consulting group um that is helping to write your ordinances, can they still, can they hear me? Okay, um I have reviewed reports that the Spicer Group performed for the Mission Road Solar Park in Isabella County. To many, it seems that this is a competing interest. If possible, we would like the Spicer Group to address their roles in how they separate their allegiances when helping write law for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, do we have um any other public comment?
Nothing on YouTube and nothing in chat. Uh so, do you want me to add the ones from the phone calls? Um so we had eight phone calls today alone, um uh just from various residents asking about what first they were asking what a battery storage ordinance is and why it was um being reviewed today. And there weren't too many comments in regards to how they felt about it. Um and I did provide them the opportunity um that either they could join us via Zoom, or they could join via YouTube, um that it would be live streamed, and they could comment there if they wanted to. Um they said that they would share it with their friends. No one expressed a yay or a nay. Um I did inform them that the reason that an ordinance would be adopted was because we wanted to get in top of and kind of ahead of the state ruling um before they started citing projects that they were interested in. Um and their only comment was that that was scary. Um but it wasn't necessarily in regards to our specific ordinance, it was just to the fact of why we're implementing it. And no one wanted to go on record, um so there's no names or addresses kind of thing, it's just general comments that were submitted.
Okay. Thank you, Deandra. See here, um Cindy and Mike, do you, do you want to respond to Sheila's question, or would we do you want to provide something in writing at a later date?
So, so yeah, so chair, yeah, we, I mean, in reference to the question of when we write an ordinance or when we, so um when we write ordinances, you know, we we look at what the state has written, and we look at what's the jurisdiction that we're working with. Um and and we work with the jurisdictions to understand, you know, where they where they are and where they're, they want to go with things, and so our ordinances are you know, based off of state state information as well as the individual jurisdictions. Um on the other side of it, when we do a review for for a jurisdiction, an application that comes in, we are working for that jurisdiction, we are working on behalf of of the municipality, or the county, or the townships, or whatever it is that whoever it is that we are working for, and uh and we're following the ordinances that each each, you know, uh jurisdiction has in front, and that's, and so when we do a review, it's completely based off of how that ordinance is written, and then we review the the document that's submitted to that ordinance, and then just as a reminder, these are all uh would, you know, go through the processes of a special use, and so they would have a special use hearing. Um and then um historically, when we go through the special use and actually have a submittal, you know, for the for the county to review, um depending that, you know, if it meets or if it it's meeting the ordinance, you know, we identify if it meets this meeting the ordinance, and then if there's other conditions that uh the talent, the county should consider, we would write that in the report for additional considerations, uh you know, moving forward with it, which would be you know, historically, they're more, you know, possibly some more um more information, whether it be more information that's needed to be supplied, um more details that we need to understand. Um and then just from uh practices that we've been, that we've seen. Um you know, I think the the repowering, I know repowering is always something that we always kind of look for as a as a condition. Um and and now everything that we do in these conditions really helps to be you know, is 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 to set, to make sure that it's, we have many, as many safeguards as we can in place for for the county, for the townships. Um but I mean, you know, I I think the question was, is where I think our alliance lies, our our, you know, our clients are are the uh the municipalities and county and, you know, the jurisdiction, so I think that was the question.
Just for clarification, I'm thinking the way that you would to answer it would be you are the county's engineering consultant, so if you're asked to review a site plan or a proposal for a battery energy storage system, as it were in this case, you would be acting in the township, or in this case, the county's, Grasset County's best interest, kind of acting, you're not an attorney, I get that, but you're an engineering consultant, and you're reviewing this ordinance and their site plan to make sure that everything in their site plan and their proposal meets what's required in this ordinance as our engineering consultant, and you're acting on behalf of the county because the county's paying your bill on that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment, anything else we should consider before we move on to the next step? All right, any other comments?
Two Gray Street, I think, I'm in North Star Township. Um I just heard about this yesterday. And I contacted some people, neighbors of mine, and they had no clue about it, they couldn't come today. So I went off their vision, uh to about social foundation. In the public opinion.
Um so currently, yeah, no, absolutely, I understand. Um so currently, the guidelines and regulations are that I may be off on my dates, but we have to post two public notices in a locally circulated newspaper, which we use the Herald because it reaches further um than some other local newspapers. And then we also have to post the onsite where the meeting would be held, which is here. But then we add the additional step of providing it for the to the townships who will be affected, so the ones that I listed earlier. Um and then they can post it where they want to in within their township. Um and I know that the first notice was posted thirty days ago, and then the other ones required to be posted between fifteen to eight days for the meeting actually is. Outside of that, there's no other posting regulations in regards to where we can share this information um outside of those four options.
And just to be clear, can you iterate, there is my understanding, there is no proposed battery energy storage system, this is simply ordinance language if one wanted to come along, is that correct?
Uh yes, we haven't received any applications or requests in regards to a project.
Because I just want, the questions that I'm hearing is people think that if we approve this, one's going to come up in the next month. To our knowledge, and I guess we've had DTE and consumers here, and the reason that brought us here to this amendment was they were asking us to look at our current ordinance to see if it aligns with what the county wants in case there is a battery energy storage system that is proposed, and that we would want to be ahead with our ordinance language prior to the state using their ordinance language to supersede us, that's what's brought us here to this point. By us recommending for approval of this tonight, if that's a motion and it's so the wishes of the board, this doesn't automatically create a battery energy storage system, nor does it create solar panels to come in, these are two totally different discussions, if I'm correct. But simply by approval tonight, if that's the case, this does not mean that there's going to be construction of one, this just creates guidelines and a roadmap for any developer, be it consumers, be it DTE, whatever energy company, if they propose a battery energy storage system in Grasset County in these six townships that the county uh regulates zoning on, this gives them language and guidance that they have to follow, and if they don't meet any of these requirements, they cannot cite one within any of these townships.
And if we did, if we did receive a a special use application from a company that wanted to, you know, come in and build one of these, or have one of these battery storage systems, we would then hold a public hearing, Spicer would go through all of the plans to make sure everything aligns with this ordinance that we are here today to discuss.
And anybody within three hundred feet of that proposed sighting, if there was a battery energy storage system that was being proposed, let's say within the next six months or year, or five years, if there's one proposed after, if this were to be approved on both levels, because it's a special use, they can't just build one. This doesn't give them a by right to do that, this gives them the ability to start looking at areas that would qualify. Then, if a uh a site plan is proposed, anybody within, any property owners within three hundred feet of this would be notified, so you'd get sent a letter that says there is going to be a hearing and a site plan review to this board, and we were to review the site plan. I'm assuming Spicer would be our engineering consultant that would review that site plan, go through and redline anything that doesn't meet our current ordinance and make a recommendation to this board whether or not we approve that sighting or not. If this ordinance is not proposed or not approved at any level, they simply would have to go to the state of Michigan for a much more simple process to meet for site plan reviews. So this gives more local control if we so moved to decide to approve this, at least tonight at this level, and if the county board's so inclined to approve it. Am I correct?
Yes, also to answer your question more directly, Kathleen, so those are the four public notices that we can provide um just for state law that we have to give. But if you have an additional option such as like a a township hall, um or somewhere that would be more readily accessible to your residents, we welcome any suggestions because um it wouldn't necessarily be the planning commission that would be then putting that notice on, but in our office, we can at least send the information and notices to those locations, whether it's a post office or township hall or whatnot, and then they can post it there. Um because we do understand that not everyone reads a newspaper anymore, not everyone is checking their county website um on the regular basis kind of thing. Um those are just the regulations that the state enforces that we have to post those notices there. But yeah. Well, thanks, here's your question.
All right, if there's no other public comments, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Um and it is five thirty-three. All right, at this time, we will have board discussion. Um we also have Spicer here, obviously, Mike and Cindy are here, if you guys have any questions regarding this ordinance.
But this is the most the most recent draft with the changes that were suggested at the summer meeting and at the January meeting and February meeting. Maybe it was in January, but the last two meetings where we had suggestions, all of those are updated in in this one. Do you want to just walk through it?
Do you guys want me to walk through it, or?
I'm comfortable with it, I just, the one question I had, based on what's been talked about, is the safety of the fire, and I know that we talked about that at the last meeting. Um for the public's information, because that's been asked, and I know there's going to be concerns about that. Uh I'm going to defer this question to Spicer. Um I know we have talked about fire mitigation and reduction, and uh also protocols as far as in the event of an emergency, contacts, and as well as education outreach. I do know that I brought this up in December, as far as the requirement that whoever is proposing the battery energy storage system has to do a a safety walkthrough with the local fire authority and public safety authorities, I want to ensure that that is there. Number two is, can you talk about the mitigations, the requirements as far as setbacks? Um fire ratings as far as walls of any structures, uh anything of that nature, and hard surfaces that will help prevent the spread of fires and try to keep them on site in the event, unfortunately, if there is one. Can you speak to those requirements that we talked about to try to explain it better to the public, what we've been, what we've talked about and what we've asked for in the last several months?
I'll try to follow along, but it'll be right there for you guys.
Okay, hi folks. So um yeah, happy to walk through uh those requirements, and I think a lot of these are really kind of hit on in our uh our subsection five, safety. Um so it maybe it's beneficial for me to read through these requirements, and then uh we can kind of talk uh to to these a little bit more if we would like to. Um so safety, uh all applicants, uh so a developer Um, so safety, uh, all applicants, uh, so a developer proposing battery storage, uh, energy storage system uh, shall include a detailed safety plan and a special use permit application. Such plans shall include, but shall not be limited to, A, a preliminary design with location and descriptive details regarding components related to fire prevention and detection and to explosion control. B, information regarding eh, eh, equipment designed for providing proper temperature control recommended for safe operation batteries. And then two, um, this is going onto the next, the next one. Uh, all battery energy storage systems shall be equipped with safety systems as outlined below. Uh, and this includes a hazard detection system and an explosion detection system. Um, it says that structures within a battery energy storage system shall be surrounded by bollards installed in such a manner to prevent vehicle impacts. A battery energy storage owner or operator shall provide an emergency operations plan and orientation for the Grashit Emergency Services Authority and other applicable emergency responders to the county before the beginning of commercial operation of the facility. The owner and operator shall coordinate with entities above for further training and best practices for fighting fires and shall identify and prepare a plan to provide emergency service providers with, with further requisite training and or equipment as needed to serve the emergency response needs of a battery energy storage system. The next item, battery energy storage system owners and operators shall establish a fire department access system for emergency off-hours access by emergency personnel. They shall maintain access to the battery energy storage system by snow plowing and maintaining all vehicle and pedestrian access pathways in a timely manner. The next item, the battery energy storage system shall be adequately signed according to the American National Standards Institute, uh, ANSI, uh, Z five three five, section four point seven point four or other applicable standard or practice. This shall include providing emergency responders information with, uh, about batteries and other hazardous contents and potential risks within the system. And then, um, the final, not the final item, the next item, the planning commission may require as a condition of the special use permit for the owner of the facility to provide a specific amount of funding to the Grashit Emergency Services Authority for any special firefighting equipment designed to extinguish the type of fire that may be involved with the type of batteries used in battery energy storage systems. And the final item under safety is that a, a security fence that meets requirements of the National Electrical Code shall, uh, um, shall and current, uh, and, uh, and current zoning ordinance requirements be placed around the perimeter of the battery energy storage system and, and electrical equipment. Um, so, you know, I think the idea that, you know, we, we, we try and cover as much as possible, you know, references to specific, um, uh, to the specific code um, that would, uh, that would govern these types of, this, these types of batteries. Um, we, we talk about orient, orienting the, uh, emergency services department about, you know, what these actually are. Um, making sure that they have a full understanding of the layout of the site, that they have access to the site and that the system is equipped with, uh, with, um, uh, sensors for, uh, these emergency events. So hopefully that spoke to the items a, as it concerned, uh, safety, and I think there was a question about setbacks. Um, so for our current version, and because we had, we had some discussion about setbacks, what would be appropriate? I think what we limited on with that, uh, and this is in section six, and it could be on page six of the current draft. There are several different setbacks that apply for these systems. So one for occupied community buildings and dwellings on non-participating properties. So, uh, we're talking about buildings that are not, um, um, leased by the project uh, or, or properties that are not leased by the projects of these buildings. The setback distance shall be four hundred feet from the nearest point on an outer wall. So we're measuring that from the, the, um, the nearest point of the, of that not participating building um, to the actual system. Two, for non-participating properties, the setback shall be measured one hundred feet from the nearest not participating property line. So, um, the setback is twofold. You have the four hundred feet from community buildings and dwellings. Uh, as long as you're not leased with the project, and then you also have to maintain a hundred foot from that lot line. Um, there's a hundred foot setback from public road right of way. We do state that fencing and landscaping, uh, may be within the required setback areas. Uh, so that setback would be measured from the, uh, the actual battery storage, uh, components itself, uh, and not just the fencing. So that, that should cover setbacks.
And when, and then when you would, you would get an application, they would, the application would need to follow, as you guys know, would need to follow this. And so in the review of the application, if anything was missing, you know, that was not, there would never be a recommendation to approve an application until all of this information, you know, was presented to the county to review.
Right. The benefit of doing this as a special use, you know, i- if you're finding that there is particular concern, you know, with the site that was selected for this development, that you feel that, you know, maybe there should be additional landscaping or maybe there should be, um, you know, other things that would help make this, uh, you know, protect health, safety and welfare of the residents. You could attach those conditions to that. So these are the, the requirements, you know, the minimum requirements they have to meet, but you can ask for more if you find that that particular situation.
All right. Thank you. Um, just for comparison and for the board and the public while we're here, can you, um, I know we just spoke a little bit about setbacks. Do you have the state of Michigan's ordinance so we can kind of compare what those setbacks look like? Uh, Grashit County is compared to what the state has set for, um, the battery, batteries?
I thought, yeah, let me ask for more. Maybe that's why you're asking.
Yeah. So, uh, it just in regard to setbacks, um, the state of Michigan's ordinance um, outlined by P two thirty-three, this would be three hundred feet from the nearest point, uh, of a, an occupied building, uh, an occupied community building or dwelling on a non-participating property. So, um, Grashit County is proposing the four hundred feet, so a little bit larger than that. Fifty feet from a public right of way. Um, so Gra, as a reminder, Grashit is proposing, uh, a hundred feet. And then for non-participating, uh, properties, um, property lines, uh, that, that requirement is fifty feet. Um, and, and Grashit is proposing a hundred. So, so Grashit is slightly, uh, slightly more restrictive than what the state standard is.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Any other discussions, questions?
What about hunting in, in the section that is, if, at those? That beyond limits or do you like learn in class how?
You know, different than anything else.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't aim where houses are. I wouldn't think you'd aim at a battery storage unit. But yeah, it doesn't change hunting restrictions or anything.
Did you catch that? So there would be no hunting restrictions per se. It would just be general courtesy, similar as if you wouldn't shoot at your friends or your neighbor's pole barn, you wouldn't shoot at these structures. I also wanted to note that I understand that solar panel farms are quite large and extensive. You can see them. The wind turbines, while they don't take up a whole lot of land by themselves, they are very tall and you can see them. These structures that are being proposed are not that extensive, so they wouldn't necessarily get in the way of hunting in the way that you're thinking. Um, they're not going to be like fifty thousand square foot buildings per se, like the actual structures themselves will be fenced in. Um, they'll have the vegetation such as the trees per se. That's the typical request. So yes, there is no hunting restrictions. At least, yeah.
These are solar panels.
Not talking about solar panels.
Batteries, they're big, like shipping container size. Type, they're not, they're not acres, they're small.
Okay. All right. So no other discussion from the board? All right. We'll go ahead and we will close the public hearing and that is at, time is five forty-six? Excuse me. So, um, the next option is, um, um, so the next, um, thing on our agenda is to have the board make a decision. Now, this is not required. We can definitely postpone this, um, until we can have a little bit more time to kind of look over the ordinance, look over what Pine River has just done. Um, whatever you guys want to do, it's completely up to you. But and then Sheila is also going to be providing us some additional documentation. Um, she's going to email those to Deandra and Deandra will share those with us. So.
Sure, it's your answer. I've read it through. I'm comfortable with what we have. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve or to recommend to send it on to the town, to the county board.
So Dave has the motion on the table. Does anybody support that?
Support.
Okay. Uh, so motion by Dave, supported by Dave, to recommend that we go ahead and send this on, uh, to the county commissioners. Um, and let's do a roll call if we, well, I guess it's just me and Rob. Um, so, um, all in favor? Was the same? Motion carried.
And so from here, um, I will send it to the board of commissioners, um, by the end of this week, all of this information, once I receive the information from Sheila as well, that will be included in the public comment portion. And then the board of commissioners will post their notice for the public hearing. They only post one. It will be in the Grashit County Herald again. My guess is that they will hold this at the next meeting in March, which is March eighteenth. But I would keep an eye either on the county website or in the newspaper to ensure that. Um, because I may be able to get the information there in time, but they may want more time just to review it all before they call it to the public hearing. So then the public hearing for the board of commissioners will be another opportunity for you to uh, bring any additional comments to say your say there. Obviously, they'll be able to review what you've said here, but if you wanted to show up there as well, you can. And then at that point, the board will either make the decision that day or request additional time before they make the decision. And then they will either approve or deny the ordinance as written.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. Any new business or, excuse me, old business?
Zero zoning complaints for the month of February. We also actually had zero zoning permits issued for the month of February. And our current open, uh, zoning violation is now at the point where it is going to legal counsel for basically to tell us what the next steps are in regards to how we're going to enforce that violation.
Thank you. Any new business? All right. No committee and special reports? Um, any general comments from the public before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
Hi, I'm Barbara Willer. Uh, we have ten acres of woods and build a pole barn for entertainment on it. We searched for years to find the perfect spot. We have a sixty-six foot easement to get back to our woods. Last year, the farmer who farms in front of the barn, the side and the back of the barn, signed up for solar panels. We will be surrounded on three sides. And Arcade Township or, uh, the Arcade Ordinance has a setback of a hundred feet. So we're going to be surrounded. How far away can solar panels be for you to hunt? What is a, what if a bullet hits a panel? Who's responsible? I can't find any information on this. I have heard that there's no hunting within four hundred feet of a solar farm. Is this true? If that's true, we won't be able to hunt at all on our property. There is no, there will be no access to deer. Our rights on our property are being taken away. If no hunting, what good are the woods my husband has longed for? Solar panels will be our scenery. Glare from the panels will keep us inside. Also, there's contamination, noise and our property value. The list goes on. I understand you can do what you want on your property, but how come we are losing our rights on our property? We've longed for this property. We're paying taxes on it. Why not put these panels on buildings and why not use our valuable, why use our valuable farmland? I pray that you will really think and also pray about this, how it will affect everyone. It's going to change everyone's lives. How would you like to be surrounded by solar panels?
Thank you. Thank you, Barb.
Michigan Public Service Commission, when citing energy projects, mentions P eight in P A two thirty-three, section two twenty-six, six and seven, it states no unreasonable diminishment of farmland and takes into consideration percentage of lands dedicated to energy production. This is information that I acquired from a handout from a law firm of Fahy Schultz. However, I would also note that this law firm also represents the energy companies. An argument could be made that Grashit County is already a host community to over four hundred turbines and at least three solar projects with many more leases signed that are not in the process of development at this time. Many residents are of the opinion that Grashit County has met its criteria on the percentage of land dedicated to energy generation. And as a matter of fact, it is starting to become a burden to this community. Thank you.
Sheila. All right. Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, sorry. It's supposed to be a new business. Um, so all of the townships and the county were provided with a copy of, hmm, sorry, let me follow up here.
The master plan?
Yes, the master plan draft. So it looks like all of the townships, everyone has provided a month for any comments they want to submit. My guess is that each township will hold a meeting regarding the master plan to have that discussion. So I encourage you guys to go speak at your meetings as well for your local townships. Um, and then those comments will be provided back to the company who is writing the draft and they are offering this opportunity where if they want to make specific notes um, about things that they want to participate or things that they don't want their township to participate in, township, city or village, um, that would be the time to make these comments. And then provide them so that they can make those changes within the master plan. Currently, um, they use the best information available and what was provided them to write the sections. But obviously, as the times have changed and as it's been over a year and a half since they first began writing this, some of that information or public opinion could have changed. Um, so they're looking to incorporate those changes. And it looks like the comments and suggestions need to be in by April first. So if you have any yourselves, you're welcome to email them to me and then we can forward them on. Otherwise, that's about it. Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to? Motion by Dave, supported by Dave, that we adjourn today's meeting and it is five fifty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Was the same? Motion carry.
Thank you, Cindy and Mike.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And thank you, John, for joining us.